Good evening. The March 22nd, 2023 council meeting of the Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dangler's absent. Mr. Viera?
I'm here.
Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Dr. Selly?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
Will everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. The Long Branch Mayor, City Council Administration are committed to cultivate in an environment of mutual trust and respect that values the diversity of our community. We will strive to enhance the quality of life for all who live here by making Long Branch a desirable place in which to live and prosper. We will treat all members of the public with respect and expect the same in return. Madam Clerk?
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. And at this time, we're happy to have a presentation for Greek American Heritage Month, and it's presented by Riley Ranja and Lily Baffiotis.
Hello. Greece has the longest coastline in Europe and is the southernmost country in Europe. Athens is the capital and it has the largest city. Greece is one of the oldest countries in Europe with a history going back thousands of years. Ancient Greece culture influenced Western civilization in many areas including architecture, the arts, government, language, literature, physiology, and much more. Greece is one of the most mountainous countries in Europe. The mainland has rugged mountains, forests, and lakes, but the country is well-known for the over 6,000 islands dotting the three beautiful blue seas. Mount Olympus is Greece's highest mountain. Ancient Greeks believed it was home to the gods. The Greeks had wonderful stories to tell about their many gods, goddesses, heroes, monsters, adventures, and battles. Each Greek god had one or more magical powers that they used for a variety of things. The Olympic Games originated in ancient Greece in 776 B.C. in Olympia, near Greece's northwest coast. They were held every four years and lasted five days. The Olympic Games were in honor of Zeus, the god of sky and leader of the Greek gods. Events included wrestling, running, wrestling, chariot racing, boxing, and horse racing. Winners were presented with a crown of olive made from the branches of the sacred olive tree. Women were not allowed to compete in the Olympics. Athens most recently hosted the Summer Olympics and Games in 2004. Greece is one of the sunniest places in the world. Go take a visit, you'll love it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Lily. Family life is a very important part of life in Greece. Children often live with their parents even after they get married. Olives, olive oil, lamb, fish, squid, and chickpeas are just some of the best foods we have to offer. Greece has 10 national parks, and there is an effort to protect natural and historic landmarks. Marine parks help protect the habitats of two of Europe's most endangered sea creatures: the loggerhead turtle and monk seal. The long coastline and clear waters make Greece an ideal location to spot sea stars, sea anemones, sponges, and seahorses hiding in the seaweed. The Greeks were the first to use vowels. The Greek alphabet is over 2,500 years old. There are 24 letters, seven of which are vowels. The word alphabet comes from the first two letters, alpha and beta. Many English words come from Greek words, especially ones beginning with PH. For example, hippo means horse, and potamus means river. So hippopotamus means river horse. Many Greek letters are used in science and math. Some famous Greeks include Socrates and Plato, who were Greek philosophers. Plato found the words first university. He wrote down his teachings and people all over the world, even today study the Greek philosophers. Aristotle discovered many things in science and biology. He wrote books about physics, poetry, zoology, biology, politics, governments, and more. Pythagoras was a mathematician. Alexander the Great was a general. He was called the great because he conquered more lands than anyone before him and became the overall ruler of Greece. Thank you for letting us share some facts about our culture that we are very proud of.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes of March 8th, 2023.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Dangler's absent. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Considerance of ordinance, public hearing, and final consideration. An ordinance of the City of Long Branch approving and adopting a redevelopment plan for non-condemnation redevelopment area consisting of Block 274, Lot 1, Block 311, Lots 1.01 and 1.02, and Block 283.01, Lots 1.01 and 1.02. This ordinance was introduced on February 22nd, 2023, and approves the adoption of a redevelopment plan for a portion of Lower Broadway quarter of the oceanfront Broadway redevelopment area, which sets forth certain uses and bulk regulations for the area. I need a motion to open the public hearing. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If any member of the public has any comments to make, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Requesting one minute notification. Vincent Lepore, 33 Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Ordinance number four. The fifth paragraph of this ordinance states five subsections. The first being, number one, quote, "No more than 299 residential units, including at least three units, 30 units affordable, to households of very low, low, or moderate income," end quote. It appearing the buildings will be oriented towards Broadway, and that the service area access to the buildings will be behind the buildings, facing the Housing Authority buildings. Sly maneuver by Kushner here, chiseling down to a minimum of three residential loading docks, quote, "intended," unquote, "for residential use." His obligation was to provide one loading dock per 75 residences. Had Kushner added one additional unit, for a total of 300, Kushner would have had to build a fourth loading dock. This is all separate and apart from two loading zones for the placement of refuse containers. Kushner has experience in shaving non-income-producing spaces out of his buildings where footage. Thus tenants will receive fewer building amenities. The second subsection reads, quote, "Approximately 22,000 square feet of retail commercial restaurant space," end quote. The obligation to provide a dedicated loading dock for retail was set at one loading dock for each retail restaurant tenant. That lease is a minimum of 10,000 square feet. And because the commercial component of the building is only 22,000 square feet, Kushner will most likely break that space into multiple stores, all under 10,000 square feet each, and avoids having to build an additional loading dock. This will result in commercial deliveries to crowd on the residential docks. Subsection three states, quote, "Approximately 558 off-street parking spaces," end quote. The 558 parking spots are all outdoor surface spots. No garage of any sort, like the backside of Pier Village One. The Union Avenue side is going to look offensive. After 18 years of catastrophe on Broadway since 2005, this is the end result: more multi-unit housing, further contributing to the eyesore of multi-unit urban sprawl and urban blight that is now a Long Ocean Boulevard. This ordinance is Broadway's version of Pier Village. Just horrific planning. It should be noted that the 299 units will be subject to rent stabilization should the movements in the city be successful. And almost remember Congressman Pelosi's remarks in reference to Kushner and his multi-unit developments and ownership of them. According to Congressman Pelosi, Kushner is, quote, "a slumlord," end quote. A need of vote, Councilwoman. You're the Associate Vice President of Strategic Partnerships at Brookdale College, whose strategic partnership programs will gain a direct benefit from this development, helping to deter a one-time contemplation of Brookdale College to leave Long Branch. You no doubt continue to have conflicts of interest, particularly with the proximity of this development to Brookdale College.
One-minute warning.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For substantive reasons stated, requesting a no vote. Ordinance 423, no.
Is there anyone else? Okay. I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Count, Council President, can I just have a second just to, just to clear up some
things? Mr. Lepore just made up a bunch of ordinances that don't exist. I'm not really sure what he's even talking about. This is a redevelopment plan for this site. Those requirements about loading docks aren't contained anywhere in this ordinance, so I just want to make sure that you understand that, that that's just simply not true. The second part about it is, I know he raised an issue with regards to Councilman Vogt. The ironic part about it is, is he just basically told us that this would be a terrible thing for the city, and now he's claiming that she shouldn't vote because it's such a benefit to Brookdale College. So leaving aside the fact that I don't understand that at all, it certainly is not a conflict because the Councilman Vogt is not a, is not a property owner within the area. Even if she was a property owner adjoining this property, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make a difference. So there certainly is not a conflict there, and I just want to, I just want to clear up, clear up that, that part of it, because as, as I indicated, it just doesn't make any sense.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 4-23 entitled an ordinance of the City of Long Branch approving and adopting a redevelopment plan for non-condemnation redevelopment area consisting of Block 274, Lot 1, Block 311, Lots 1.01 and 1.02, and Block 283.01, Lots 1.01 and 1.02. I need a motion to adopt on second and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Dangler's absent. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Abstain. Capital ordinance appropriating $8,948,909 to pay for major renovations to the Carnegie Library and to the development of the Long Branch Health Monitoring and Telecommunications Center in the City of Long Branch and the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey. This ordinance was introduced on March 8th, 2023, and appropriates $8,948,909 consisting of $3,100,000 received from a grant provided by the New Jersey Library Construction Bond Act. Three, $2 million received from a grant provided by the Federal Department of Health and Human Services. Two thousand, I mean $2 million received from a grant provided by the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Division of Recovery and Mitigation. And for $1,848,909 received from a grant provided by the Federal American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 to pay for major renovations to Carnegie Library and the development of the Long Branch Health Monitoring and Telecommunications Center. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
If any member of the public has any comments to make, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Requesting one-minute notification. Vincent Lepore, 33 Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Mr. Raynaud, on your prior comment after I spoke, keep your confabulations to yourself. I attended the planning board meetings. I know what I'm talking about. And as far as a need of vote, why don't you call up the state attorney general and discuss it, the investigation of her with the conflicts of interest? Library ordinance number five. Major renovations to the library and development of the Long Branch Health Monitoring and Communications System. On January 27, 2023, the only lot transferred so far from the donation tract is new Lot 2.01 and Block 208. There exists a funding ordinance totaling close to $9 million, approximately $8,948,909. And there's no breakout as to what exactly this close to $9 million is doing. Section 1 cites, aye, $3,100 received from a grant provided by the New Jersey Library Construction Bond Act. Mr. Martin, since this was a matching grant, is the $3,100,000 sourced from the state or is this sourced from the taxpayers?
No. This particular $3,100,000 is sourced from the state.
Is any portion of this $3,100,000 going to the Health and Communications Center? Yes or no?
No.
All right, I'll put an Oprah in on that. II, $2 million received from a grant provided by the Federal Department of Health and Human Services. Mr. Martin, is that $2 million solely for the Health and Communications Center?
Yes.
Okay. Section III, II, II, $2 million received from grants provided by the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Division. Is that $2 million solely for the Health and Communications Center?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. The $1,848,909 grant from Federal American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Mr. Martin, where is that $1,848,909 going? To the library, Health and Communications Center, or both?
Not to the library, Health and Communications.
Just to the Health and Communications Center. So, Mr. Martin, what exactly is the library's role, if anything, in the Health and Communications Center?
It's two different projects.
Two different projects?
Correct.
The library has nothing to do with the Ronald McDonald Health, Health and Communications Center?
The renovations to the library don't have anything to do with Ronald McDonald.
Will the library have anything to do with the Ronald McDonald House?
The library is moving into the Ronald McDonald House on May 1st as a temporary quarter.
Mr. Martin, is any of the funding in this ordinance going to library purposes at the Ronald McDonald House? Yes or no?
I'm not really quite sure what you're saying.
I'll put an Oprah in for that answer. The business and career centers are separate and apart from the health and communication? Or is it overlapped, Mr. Martin? The business and career centers for the library are separate and apart from the health and communication? Or is it overlapped?
There's probably some overlap.
There's overlap. So then library money is going into this?
No, the, it's, it, these are projects at two different places. So the library money is going to, to renovate the library.
One minute.
And the other money is going to renovate the Ronald McDonald House and the former Monmouth Med Site. It's two different projects.
I have problems with this ordinance.
It's a capital ordinance with two different purposes.
I have problems with this ordinance.
Because you don't understand it?
Oh, I certainly do understand it. I can assure you I'm a better accountant than you. The accountable breakout accompanying the funding, there's no transparency available on this. Maybe on May, April 1st, when the library holds its annual awards, with the presence of all the politicians showboating on taxpayers' money where this all comes from, maybe there'll be an award exclusively for the taxpayers. Don't you dare, Attorney Raynaud, question my accounting.
No, I think it's your legal expertise that I was questioning. And just for the record, this is two different projects, so that, that's, that's why you're seeing.
You're out of your legal, legal as well.
Um, just wanted to make sure that we understand that.
Thank you. I need a motion to close. So moved. Second. Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 5-23 entitled a capital ordinance appropriating $8,948,909 to pay for major renovations to the Carnegie Library and the development of the Long Branch Health Monitoring and Telecommunications Center in the City of Long Branch and the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey.
So moved.
I need a motion. So moved. Second. Roll call.
Mr. Dangler's absent. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Ordinance is for introduction. This is the first reading of ordinance 06-23 entitled an ordinance authorizing the execution of an easement agreement between the City of Long Branch and Pax Construction Corporation concerning the use of a right-of-way located alongside Block 281, Lot 1.01, and a city-owned parking lot located on Belmont Avenue at Block 281, Lot 6. This ordinance authorizes the city to enter into an easement agreement to convey two easements to the developer of a proposed mixed-use project at the corner of Belmont Avenue and Third Avenue. The agreement grants to Pax Construction Corporation a temporary construction easement to allow the developer to mill, resurface, and stripe the adjoining city parking lot on Belmont Avenue, and a perpetual, non-exclusive easement over a city right-of-way to be used by the developer for site elements, including a trash enclosure, cafe seating, stormwater facilities, and decorative sidewalks. I need a motion to introduce on first reading and advertise and post according to law and set the public hearing for April 12th, 2023.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Dangler's absent. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance 07-23 entitled an ordinance designating no parking anytime, both sides, entire length of Ocean Avenue, from Ocean Terrace extending north to Seaview Avenue. This ordinance prohibits parking at all times on the entire length of Ocean Avenue on both sides from Ocean Terrace extending north to Seaview Avenue. I need a motion to introduce on first reading and advertise and post according to law and set the public hearing for April 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler's absent. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yep.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance 08-23 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 262 Property Maintenance by amending Article 2, Adoption of International Property Maintenance Code, and Article 5, Registration of Abandoned Propies, the Code of the City of Long Branch. This ordinance amends Chapter 262 Property Maintenance by referencing the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code and adding officers in the Bureau of Fire Prevention and Code Enforcement and the Police Department to the enforcing authority. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise, and post according to law and set the public hearing for April 12th, 2023. May I motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler's absent. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance 09-23 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 316 Towing by amending subsections 316-5 Fees and Charges, 316-7 License Fee Term, Renewal, Annual Inspection Fee, and 316-8 Responsibilities of Tower or Wrecker or the Code of the City of Long Branch. This ordinance amends Chapter 316 Towing by amending various fees and changing the amount of refusals in Section 316-8H. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise, and post according to law and set the public hearing for April 12th, 2023.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Dangler's absent. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance 10-23 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 244 Parking Lots and Meters by amending subsection 244-2.1 Metered Municipal Parking Lots of the Code of the City of Long Branch. This ordinance amends Chapter 244 Parking Lots and Meters by amending various fees and adding the language "vehicles register to a residential address within the city is exempt from parking fees within the metered lot described in 244-2.1A." I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise, and post according to law and set the public hearing for April 12th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler's absent. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Public participation for resolutions and all general comments. I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So moved. Second. All in favor? Aye.
If there is anyone in the audience that has a comment to make, please step to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes, may only speak once.
Madam Clerk, requesting one-minute notification. Vincent Lepore, 33 Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Resolution 91, authoring amendment to redevelopment agreement of 390 Ocean Owner LLC. This is 390 Ocean Avenue, known as the former Seaview Towers site. NJDEP CAFRA has required the developer to do new building designs so as to be compliant with coastal zone management rules and scenic resource and design rules. The new design reduced the number of units from 154 to 140. NJDEP CAFRA granted a permit for the newly designed buildings on November 30th, 2022. But here's the rest of the story. On April 27th, 2022, the minutes to the council meeting reads as follows. Quote, Vincent Lepore is requesting a no vote on Resolution 11022 that pertains to redevelopment at 390 Ocean Avenue, end quote. Not only that time, but repeatedly before and after, I forewarned the council of the violation of NJDEP CAFRA coastal zone management rules. Council repeatedly ignored, as with the planning board. November 30th, 2022, on that day at the planning board meeting, I forewarned in presence the planning board on a resolution of approval for 390 Ocean LLC that those plans provided by the developer to the planning department, new plans, were not being considered, and that they were doing a resolution on the old plans. In spite of my objection, the incompetence of this planning board proceeded to do an approval of the original plans. Junk government throughout, catastrophic environmental failure all around by the City Council, Planning Board, and Environmental Commission. Two liaisons of the Environmental Commission, Wittes and Vogt, are guilty as well. You played your little games of incompetence on the city level, but I enforced the coastal zone management rules in Trenton at NJDEP CAFRA hearings. I won. You lost. Concerning the SPCA contract, Resolution 321, on December 28th, the night of adoption, the following remarks were made. Dangler, there's a 60-day clause where if we're not satisfied, that they will go. Viera, that we have 60 days. If it doesn't work, I hope it fails. Selly, please just give us the 60 days that we need to see if it works. If it doesn't work, we'll look for something else. Vogt, we'll see where we are 60 days from now. If it doesn't work, we're going to have to do something about it. Pallone, let's give it a try here for 60 days. Item 16 of the contract provides the 60-day opt-out. Since the contract went into effect January 1st, 23, essentially the 60-day notice served on December 28th, 2022 by Selly, Dangler, Viera, Vogt, and Pallone has expired. My notice at the January 11th, 23 council meeting, the 60 days has expired as well. I have served notice to the city for the termination of the agreement. As for Dangler, Viera, Vogt, Selly, and Pallone, there still not has occurred. No notice for the opt-out of the ST. no notice for the opt-out of the SPCA contract. No doubt, the poor performance by the SPCA in 2022 has detailed at these council meetings and incidents that have occurred since January of this year justify this opt-out. We're waiting for the formality, or is it going to be continued junk government? Let's see if council holds to their words on the 60-day opt-out. Council certainly doesn't want to be guilty, going back on its own word and continuing junk government.
So apparently, Mr. Lepore is not the attorney that he thinks he is, because this contract has a provision in it that says we can terminate it on 60 days' notice. That doesn't mean that it's, it's terminated on the 60th day after we went into it.
Better than you. The governing body gave notice that day. And I am a better attorney than you because read item 16 of the contract. My one minute is not up. The clerk did not notify me of it.
So in, so in any event, the.
I may have walked away, but my five minutes stands. If he's going to make a comment, I'm going to respond. I still not have heard. My five minutes is up.
In any event, the contract hasn't been terminated. I just want to make sure that you understand it's in full force and effect. And the council still has the right to terminate it on 60 days' notice if they had cause to do it. And of course, there has been no cause shown for that purpose, so. I just want to, we keep hearing the same thing over and over again, like there's a clock running because there isn't a clock running. And of course, a citizen can't stand up at the podium and give notice of termination of a city contract. It just doesn't work that way.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? I need a motion to close the public participation portion of this meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will now ask Madam Clerk if there were any changes to the list of resolutions.
No changes have been made.
Thank you. We can take the listed resolutions or consent and agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler's absent. Mr. Vera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
At this time, we have miscellaneous business for the good of the order. Councilwoman Vera?
Good evening. Thanks for coming. It's nice to have the participation here. I want to thank Nicole for bringing the students over. She does a great job with these students. And also I want to thank Riley and Lily for a great job for the Heritage Month. They keep doing an awesome job. I'll thank them. And good night.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vogt?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you here. So I just want to bring to your attention an event that's happening on Monday, March 27th, which is the Latino Small Business and Entrepreneurship Forum. It's a great, it's a great program that's being put, being offered by our library in collaboration with a number of different organizations. And it's an ongoing, it will be an ongoing opportunity for our Latino small business owners to get advice on opening their business and keeping their business going and connecting them with all the resources that they need through the state in terms of grants that they can access and different kind of help that they can get for, for their businesses. So March 27th starts at 6 o'clock. It's in the library. It will be very beneficial for any of our Latino small business owners. And again, it's an ongoing initiative, so I think it'll be quite good. So I just wanted to bring everyone's attention to that, and with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you. Councilwoman Selly?
Good evening, everybody. I thought the students did a very nice job, and it's always nice to have them in the audience. I would like to, yeah. Well, I want to wish everybody a happy Easter and happy Passover, and thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Mayor Pallone?
I just want to mention every, well, thank you all for coming. Next week, there are a bunch of Easter events for the kids. This Thursday, there is a reception at the Arts Center for the first Brazilian artist celebrating his Brazilian art. That's six to eight Thursday at the Arts and Cultural Center on Branchport and Broadway. Next Tuesday and Wednesday, the Arts Center for the Kids, there's a photograph with the Easter Bunny and activities for the kids. That's, I believe, between 5:00 and 7:00 o'clock. And everyone will get a chocolate treat. And then there's the Easter Egg Hunt in West End Park, I believe, on April 1st, if I'm not mistaken. And, but just check the website. There's a bunch of, there's a bunch of things going on for the kids for the Easter holiday. And thank you again for coming.
Thank you. And I too would like to thank everyone for coming this evening. And it's always great to see the students from Long Branch perform for us, and it's very encouraging for us. Thank you, and have a good evening. I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, and good evening.